All right. Good morning, everyone. I would like to go ahead and call to order the special bid board meeting for this morning, Tuesday, August 26. I believe that we have an acknowledgement of a quorum, so we are good to go. If we could just have an approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of August 7, 2025, if we have an approval of those minutes, approval, and so somebody motioned to approve in a second?
I'll move.
Okay, we've had a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, agenda items for consideration today is the bid operating plan.
So, good morning, everybody. As you recall, we spent a little extra time at the last meeting going over the budget, and there were still a lot of items to be discussed, so we decided to have a special meeting to discuss some of those topics. So I hope you've all had a chance to dig a little deeper into the paperwork and the budget. As we talked about last time, in the past, you've basically had a budget that represented just the major categories, and you guys didn't really dive deeper into where those expenses actually are. So what we've done over the last few months is to break that down for you in your financial reports, and what we did for the budget was also take that breakdown, so you could actually see where those costs are, and then there's the subtotals for the different categories. But there are some, you know, conversations that need to be had on a particular of a couple of different topics, of whether you choose to spend the money in that particular way, or maybe there are some things that haven't been expressed to me yet, or you guys have ideas in the last week or two where you think the budget could go for the next year. So essentially, it's sort of a conversation from that point. Peggy, do you want to, I'll just go through and give a real brief summary of where we were last meeting, and then I guess the question is, do you want to just sort of take them by topic, or just want to have more of an open conversation? How, do you have a thought on how you'd like to, once I give you a summary?
The item by item, and then just an open conversation, I think, yeah, we just need to go through them, and then if people have an opinion on them, they should express it at that time, so that we can
Capture that.
And just move on from it, yep.
Okay. And then, just also for clarification, so once we have the budget sort of solidified today, what we'll do is later today, tomorrow, we'll get that in a little bit tighter package, which will be then the, on the agenda for next, for the next meeting, from that perspective. So, to go through the budget real quick, the current assessment bids, just so you know, you're working for 2026, our estimate is, working with about $113,000, almost 114. In terms of some other revenues, most of that revenue is actually from the assessment, although there are some other, like the EV charging stations have been increasing each month, it's not significant, but each month it's a little bit more, so you have a few dollars there, and some carry forward, and from those perspectives. There are some standard expenses, like the independent audit expense, and that sort of thing, administrative miscellaneous cost, and I should mention, for those of you who weren't here last, the last meeting, in the budget, we also kind of did a little bit of a forecast forward into '27, '28, with some costs, if we don't have a fixed cost, I just did a 5%. It might not be 5%, it might be 2%, it could be a flat line, but just so you're, when you're looking at it, you're like, why, why are we looking at those? I think it'd be helpful, just so that you kind of have a sense of where the bid's going, not just kind of looking at it in the next 12 months, because there may be projects that could happen over two years, there might be projects you want to do this year, and a different project in the following year, that kind of thing. So one of our budget items is marketing. Right now, we have, we have not touched that marketing budget too much, it's, we've only touched it a little bit, so we should probably talk a little bit about what you intend that money to be used for this year, as well as going forward the next year. In terms of lights and decorations, we have typically had a flat line item of about $20,000 in the budget. This year, the estimate is $21,000. This $20,000 is the installation of all the Christmas decorations, the light poles, the Christmas tree, decorating the Christmas tree, the big ornament over by sales, and lighting and decorations on the bridges, those types of things. We did ask for a quote, or an estimate for next year, that's estimated to be about $22.50 for next year, and if I just did a random 5%, you can see that that price could, could go up a little bit, going in at 28, into about $24,000. One of the items we should talk about is ornament replacement. We have been losing ornaments over the last few years, some have faded, so eventually there's going to be less and less on the tree, so the question there is, do we replace them on a yearly basis, so we just kind of add each year, or do we just kind of wait till they've kind of depleted, and you just buy all new? So there's a couple thoughts there, in terms of how we could move on with that. The Christmas wreaths south of Walnut Street on Main Street are old ones, they're over in Public Works. Last year, they're, they're not quite circular anymore, they're a little tired from that perspective. And I've also brought this up last week, when the Christmas season is done, those wreaths come down, and then from January, February into March, we really don't have anything downtown. There's no flags, there's no banners, there's no plants, we, the Downtown Association does have their, I think they're rebranding it this year, and I can't think of the new name. Correct, yep. Oh, she's way back there. And so, there's really nothing there, and so the thought I had with them was, if we had some snowflakes, they could be up through Christmas, but could stay up into January, February, come down maybe around the 1st of March, that would get through that kind of season. They wouldn't need to be on every light pole, so the thought was, and we could talk about the logistics, but you could have like three snowflakes at each intersection, or in each block, mixed in with the Christmas wreaths. The Christmas wreaths we wouldn't use could actually be installed south of Walnut, and that way, you'd have a little bit of winter with Christmas, but then there'd be just a little bit of winter moving forward, just to, just to have a little extra light, a little interest in those, in that kind of colder part of the season. So, just a thought, to think about. Electricity costs, we did talk about that in that budget, we did not go into each meter cost, but it is, it runs around 8,000, but we did list each meters, meter, because there's a question of, well, where is all this power? And it's basically, the power is for the rooftop lighting, each block or segment of buildings has its own meter that powers that system, and so, and there's, I think, a couple other meters for some other things around, but that's mostly those meters. I'll mention, you know, those are all incandescent bulbs. There is a committee put together to look at lighting of bridges and other things, and there's been discussion about maybe replacing that skyline lighting, if we did that with LED in the future, that, I would think that electricity costs would drop significantly from that perspective. Facade grants, we typically have had, $30,000 was adopted in this year's budget, we have $17.50 that wasn't awarded. We also have a facade project that did not happen, so that money is now back in the pot of money also. So, the amount of facade money is growing, and we're trying to get it out the door and to have people use it, but sometimes people's projects just don't pan out, or they have to delay them for various reasons. Landscaping budget, I won't go through this in great detail, it's all kind of summarized, but last year, the adopted budget was about $40,000, about $10,000 is for maintenance, the other is about $28,000, $29,000 for all the flowers, the hanging baskets, that sort of thing. And then you should be aware that it's about $30,000 that the city actually puts in for the watering, other things, so it is a combination for some of those big planters downtown. It's about half bid, half city, in terms of maintenance from that perspective. As I mentioned, we have about $10,000 for clean, the clean program, and we've spent some of it, but we haven't spent all of it this year, and that's the contract for Lambs, and I'm just going to scoot through some of these real quick, we can go back if needed. One of the conversations earlier this year, we discussed was that people don't really know what we've contributed in terms of the bid, and so the discussion, I thought, was we might want to think about some sort of very nice signage that kind of goes with the theme downtown, and it might be like, you know, planting sponsored, or hanging basket sponsored by your business improvement district, or something like that, so people know a little bit about, you know, who's, you know, that contribution. Then, we did do a 5th and 6th cleanup, 5th and 6th Street cleanup this spring, that was about $1,200. It'd probably be about $1,300 next year. Going to skip over that. Also, we had a presentation from Roots and Branches last meeting, they had a budget of $971 in the adopted budget last fall, they requested an extra 500, that went up to $1,471. This year, they're requesting for the 20, oh, I'm sorry, their actual expenditures were $1,137, and they are asking for $1,990 this next year, and it's detailed on the screen what they would use that for. So a significant increase request there from them. And then, we'll hit a little bit of conversation about mulch and things like that. The water bills, we'll probably dive a little bit deeper in, I'll give you a quick refresher on that, but basically, there's three water, three meters. As you heard Roots and Branches, that was a request that they had with the reconstruction, but the actual bills were assigned to the bid. We are estimating about seven, we'll just call it $800 for water. This year, we've had quite a bit of water, so I'm not expecting the bills, for the water bills, to be huge, but if we had a year that was excessively dry, that bill could go quite, quite higher than it has been. So, this is a little summary on the screen, just so you understand that, there's a base meter cost, so if there's no water used at all, no one turns them on, it is a minimum of $539 just to have them in operation. There is an insulation cost of $150 each spring, because every fall, they're taken out, because they're not in the building, so they're removed for free in the fall by the water department, but there's an insulation cost, and then there's the proposed budget there. Undesignated funds, we had about $3,000 in the budget last year. This year, with the numbers as they are, it's only about $300 from that perspective, and the current undesignated fund balance is about $103,000 that you haven't, that you've saved. And that's sort of the quick synopsis, so I think if we go to, on the agenda, you need to switch mouses, it might be best to go to page six and seven, and six is a little small of font, so you might have to, I'm going to try to, I'm going to enlarge my screen, but, and I suppose for the camera, we need to, I think probably, Jonah would be able to switch the screen from my, or do I have to undo the click share? I'm not sure. I can pick up the
Jeff?
Yep.
Just, just a quick question. Does, does that unassigned monies, does that include the stuff that hasn't been used in the facade grant program, or is that in excess of the unused facade grant monies?
I believe it's not, the facade, no, the way I have the spreadsheet right now is, what you allocated for the facade is actually in that line item, so
So this is above and beyond that?
Correct, yep. Yeah, so basically, when we award that grant for, let's just say, $10,000, it stays in that facade grant category, until either we, they finish the project and we send them the check, or the time comes and they haven't done the work, and in that case, it comes back to the, to the account, but at this point, the 103, I haven't brought anything back over there, so
So we're not rolling this, and letting that accumulate year after year after year, correct? If it's unused at the end of this fiscal year, it'll go back into the general fund? Or, I mean, are
That would be a question you would want to say, I mean, I guess that's a question for the budget, is do you want to keep it in the facade, so you budgeted $30,000 last year, let's say, you want to budget 30 this year, but let's say 10 wasn't used last year, do you want to make it 40 available this year, or do you want to put that 10 back into your undesignated amount, and just keep it at 30? That's really a question you guys might, you know, how you would like to, you could use it for something else, and from that perspective, or if you think there's projects available that you could, you know, use that 40, but
Thank you.
There's a choice there, yep. So how about we, let's see. Just take that out? Oh. I just wondered what's on the, put that Oh, there. Okay, there we go. All right, so now everybody can see the spreadsheet, so Does anybody want to start off with a particular topic, or do you just want to start from the top down, or is there some large conversation type items you'd like to start with? I can lead you through, but I don't want to like Okay, sounds good. All right, so on the spreadsheet, the independent audit expenses, administrative costs are flat, from that perspective. The marketing, you'll see, we spent, we budgeted 10, we've spent about $1,000, we have $9,000 for this year's budget. I guess the question is, do you want to keep the budget at 10? And then, if you want to keep it at 10, what I'd like to have is, I'd like a little bit more clarity of what that marketing, there's a lot of different ideas I can think of, but what I've not been able to glean, or wasn't, what wasn't passed on to me, was what the thought was of that. You already have the Downtown Business Association, that a lot of their marketing is focused on, a lot of their events is focused on downtown, so, you know, is this marketing in a different way? Is it more marketing directly to the bid members, is it more to the public? That's sort of, you know, and we don't have to decide that today, if you're all, okay, like, let's just keep it at 10, we can make that, we don't need to get bogged down today in what that 10's used for, but I want to have that discussion maybe in November or something, so that we can get the year kicked off in however, whatever direction, so thoughts on?
That was going to be one of the discussion items in the strategic committee planning, as to, you know, where, where was the bid headed, what were we going to do with that? Because you're right, $10,000 for marketing, what is, what is the objection, or objective for that, for those funds? What, you know, we're not, we're not promoting a specific thing, so what do we want to do with 10, I mean, $10,000 is a lot of money, so to let it just sit there is kind of silly. So I think that is something that we do need to discuss as a board, you know, how do we want, how do we want those funds to be allocated? What do we, what do we consider bid marketing? You know, what does that look like to us as a board? So
I mean, is it, I mean, you could, it could be, it could be to the public, to your membership, it could be, some of those funds could, I'm just going to throw out a number, maybe it's 2,500 or 5,000 that you provide to the Downtown Association with the intent that they're, they're specifically marketing to the public a certain direction. I think the interesting part there is, since we already have one organization that's really promoting and has a social media presence and all of that, the bid doesn't really have those types of things, so, you know, do you partner with one of the other, you know, groups downtown and say, here's X amount, we would really like you to focus on, you know, these particular things? Or, I mean, I've mentioned to Peggy, it could be, you know, helping the businesses market themselves better, so maybe the bid can bring an expert in on marketing, or window displays, or something else like that, and, you know, get a group, you know, kind of a workshop together, so people can learn how to do those types of things. So it's, there's a, in my mind, a really big space that could be, you know, accomplished there.
I like the idea of bringing like a professional in, and, you know, focusing on maybe offering some sort of, you know, consulting kind of thing, and offering that to the bid members, and putting that under the, the marketing, and maybe cutting that in half, you know, and, and being able to utilize some of those funds towards something else. I don't know if anyone else has any thoughts on that? We haven't been using it up to this point, so if anyone has any ideas, we're certainly open.
Yeah, I have some ideas that we might be able to come up with to get more people to funnel downtown, so I'd like to keep a $10,000 just to entertain it, and then if it doesn't work out, we can always shift it.
Yeah, I definitely agree that the marketing through social media is huge, and that gets what gets people downtown, is marketing, like through Downtown Association and social media ads and posts and however else. That's a huge expense, and gets people from everywhere around the state downtown, so that's a huge expense, and think that's a good use of money as well, for sure.
Okay, great. So I'm hearing, I'm hearing, I'm hearing clarity that we'll keep it at 10,000 from that perspective. All right, so lights and decorations, like I mentioned, the budget for '26 would be about, for '26 would be about $22.50. That's for what we're currently doing without any expansion, anything different, so is there any desire to do anything different with lights and decorations? And what I mean by additional, I have not calculated in the cost of ornament replacement, any extra additional wreaths, or snowflakes, or any other concepts out there? So if we leave the budget as is, it truly is, would be where we currently are at.
If, if, if we decided that we wanted to replace some of the ornaments, or add some wreaths, where would we grab that money from? Just the excess?
So, so that's a great question. So one thing is, we could budget for it now, and then that gives myself direction on where we're going next year, in terms of those things, to, you know, get those things purchased, or look for a sale, that kind of thing. If you budgeted just the $22.50, and then, let's say, in March, there was a desire like, hey, the Christmas decorations did look like, there wasn't quite as many as there used to be, let's do a replacement, your undesignated fund balance could certainly be used by that. We would end up putting something on your agenda, you would vote for it for a specific thing, give authorization for it, so you could always choose to use your undesignated fund balance. However, traditionally, you have saved that undesignated fund balance for very large projects, so when you actually bought the tree, that was really expensive, I believe, looking back through the records, you used undesignated fund from that perspective. So, sort of your larger capital projects over the years have come out of the undesignated fund, so if you kind of whittle the undesignated fund down by a couple thousand here and there, that's just going to shrink over time, so if you can, if you can, if you can budget for it in the regular budget, because it's something you know you want to do, I would suggest doing that, rather than thinking, well, we can decide that later, it's, there's an extra pot of money.
So we should just do an evaluation this Christmas, walk around or whatever, find out what's needed, and proceed from there, is that what you're saying?
You can certainly do that. Blingle did indicate that when they opened up, that, Blingle put the Christmas decorations up the last, this last year, in the boxes, there was many broken ones, so, so the thought was either, I would say, usually what happens in the world of Christmas decorations for downtown, usually January, there's a sale, so what I would suggest is, this year, we put what we have up, we can evaluate it, if you put a line item in here of, let's just pick a number, then we kind of have a placeholder, and we could evaluate in November, and everybody could say, eh, it looks okay, a few, or, you know, we can have that discussion, and then if there's a dollar amount. What I can do is, I actually, we have the bills of how many we purchased, I can probably go out there, once they're out of the boxes, we could probably count, and I could probably give you an estimate if we're down by 25% or, I would think if we got below 50%, it would look kind of bare, it's a big tree.
I think replacement's important, like it needs to look great.
Yeah, rather than one big expense, if we could do it annually, I think it would be
Yeah.
Yeah, and just plan for a 5% to 10%, you know, every year of replacing broken ornaments and things like that, then it's not a huge expense all at once.
Okay. We'll add, we'll add a couple thousand, 2,000, 1,500? 2,000, okay.
Are we including reefs on South Main in this particular item, or...
Well, I was just gonna, the line item for ornament replacement, I was just going to put in for 2,000. I guess the next item was, are you guys fine with the reef south of Main Street?
This is mainly ornaments on the tree that have been broken.
Oh, I got, yeah, we had, so I was, I was moving on. Are we still on the ornaments?
No, I think we're done.
Okay. Yeah, the reefs, the reef south, the reef south of, the reef south of Main Street, they're... I mean, Doug's in the back room. I, they've, I think they've, to me, they're, because all the rest of them are new, to me, they clearly look, if they all were of that age, they'd probably all look the same. But there is a, when you're standing at Walnut and Main Street, and you look one way and look the other way, you can tell one set's much older than the other.
And how many are there? Eight?
There's eight brackets that I've been able to identify south of Main Street.
And that's 600 and some dollars, so it's about 5,000.
They're 682 list price. They were, when I looked this up back in about a three or four, I guess it would have been July, there was a sale, so we can probably get them less than 682. But 682 is the list price for the exact same reef, reef we currently have, from the same manufacturer. And usually the sales are 25 or 30% off, so, I mean, we can, there'll be a savings there, but...
You're talking next January?
Yes. I mean, I mean, yes, correct. Unless for some reason you wanted to try to do that this year, but we'd have to figure out what bucket of money that would come out of.
Still has to be budgeted for next year, though, right?
If you were to purchase some, we should budget them for next year, yes. The other option, instead of doing eight, you could probably do four, and then do another four, if you wanted to kind of stretch it out. You don't have to do it all in one year, but...
Might not look very good. Yeah, me too. I think we should budget for all eight of them.
Okay. Now, here's the question for you. Do you want the reef, so we can do all the reefs, but if you actually were to go with, if you like the concept of the snowflakes, those snowflake, the reefs, where the snowflakes would go already have reefs, so we wouldn't need to buy the reefs. You could actually put the reef south of Main Street, and then put snowflakes in the more central part.
My only question about the snowflakes, and I like the idea, but you're going to end up with, what, about eight or 10 snowflakes downtown, when you take the reefs, reefs off?
I had estimated about three per intersection. That was either 12 to 14. So it's a little bit more money than reefs, but basically, if you look at each intersection, there's sort of about, because Main Street, there's usually a light, and then two other lights. So there's usually three lights sort of at an intersection, so you could do three different snowflakes at each intersection. And then I think as you look down the Main Street, you just sort of, there'd be just a scattering of snowflakes. It wouldn't be intense or anything. It would just, it'd just be a little nod to winter.
Yeah, I feel like if you're going to do one or the other, I'd do the snowflakes and separate it out, and then you can use the other reefs and put those in those other areas, just to do one.
All right, so we're going to have 2,000 for ornaments, and we'll try to do the snowflakes for 9268. All right. Any other topics about lighting or decorations? Anybody have any other ideas that I wasn't aware of, that we need, should talk about?
Any more deer?
There are deer.
I retired mine.
There are deer, I think, still at Public Works, so a number of them were not functional. But I think maybe four got reassembled, like different parts of... Yeah, Julie kind of pieced them together, so she was able to get, I think, four deer in operation, so... If you would like, if you'd like, we can figure out how to get deer back out there. I don't think we can have as many, but think about it. It's not a budget item, just let me know. We got, we got a month and a half before we need to find some deer, so. Electricity cost, again, that's been averaging about, just slightly under 8,000. It's been pretty consistent. I don't anticipate a large increase there from that perspective. So I would just recommend we leave that budget item as, is for '26, unless anybody knows something about rate hikes that I'm not aware of, so. For the facade program, you'll see there on the budget line item, we budgeted 30,000 this last year. We did provide three grants this year, one for Mr. Husar, one for Big Brothers, Big Sisters, and then one for the Gomans just south of Walnut Street there, so you can see that total amount there. I would suggest 30,000 seems a reasonable amount to budget, unless somebody thinks differently. Okay. And then from landscaping, you'll see here a little bit of detail from that perspective. We did budget 10,000 for the clean type program. We haven't spent all of those monies. And then if I go on to, this is where the screen's going to get a little bigger on us. So you'll see the plant materials and the spring cleanup. And this column, by the way, is, the second column's the 2026 column. There are some costs anticipated to go up, so that total amount, sorry, it's a little... We would anticipate keeping it at 40,000 for this next year. We had just a little bit of wiggle room, and we're just sort of filling in that. So I think we can keep it at 40,000 this next year, but we probably would need to discuss for '27 budget year that there might be additional costs occurring at that point. And I think everyone's pretty happy with everything this year. We did have a couple hanging baskets that sort of died, and we did some replacements. And early in the spring, there was a few annuals that got some frostbite. We had that real, I don't know if you remember, but we had a cold night. So those got replaced for like 30 bucks or something like that, but I think they've done pretty well this year, so. And then, and then you hadn't, I don't think this was a category we had had before, was donations, but we separated it out for clarifications and conversations. So what you see here is a summary of the donations for 2025, again, from the slide. We, this is specifically for Roots and Branches, and I guess the question would be, we've had just under 1,000, we upped it to 14, and they're asking for more money for perennials and annuals, and garden signage, and operating cost. And then they did throw in the water. I think the other conversation which we'll get down to here is the water, the water bills, so.
John, do you know, before the bid funds came to the city, who paid for the water?
The bid, so there were, those three spickets downtown were not there. They came with the reconstruction. It was a request of Roots and Branches to put the spickets in. And then, as we've talked about, there was a decision to assign the bill to the bid, but you guys didn't know that. I don't know the logistics behind that, or the why. Before those three spickets were there, I believe the water was accessed off of private property. And there is a spicket that Parks pays for, that's an old settlers' park that Roots and Branches does use. There's also a private spicket over, sort of by the flags at the corner of Walnut and Main, where the, where you can walk down to the Riverwalk. It's sort of hidden in the shrubs. They'll use that one. There used to be a spicket, I think, Tenny's let them use, but then somebody left it on or turned it on, and there was a little bit of a flood, so they said, no more use of our water. So it was sort of a partnership between private and public spickets at the time, but then these three were added.
So they came, they, they came in, and they just asked the city to put in these water things, and then the bid just started paying for it?
My understanding is that during the reconstruction, different groups were asked, what would you like to see? They said spickets. That was integrated into the construction project. Then, when the meters were installed, the water department said, who are these going to, who's paying for the bill? And the decision in administration was that the bid would pay the bill. And then, and then as you recall, we discussed this where nobody knew that you were paying the bill.
Okay.
Yeah, it was requested by the Transportation Committee, excuse me, but it wasn't, we didn't know it was going to be metered. We didn't know there was going to be an expense for putting the meters in, taking them out. That was kind of a surprise.
Yeah, so under the...
We did want to have, it was requested that there was water at those locations.
So under the regulations from the state that govern the water and the sewer utility, they cannot put in meters that are not paid for. You can't just have a free spicket that just free flows.
That was, that was just kind of an unpleasant surprise.
Yeah. I mean, it's not, I mean, in the big picture of things, it's not that much money. I mean, and they do a great job. It's just, I was...
Paying for it, we shouldn't be charging.
The only, the only, the only caution I have is that's just our best guess at this point of what that water usage is, and that's part of last year and this year, both were fairly wet summers, so... It, it could go up. And just so you're aware, this is just the water bill that Roots and Branches goes and turns the tap on, and they hook a hose. All the other water for the annuals, the large trees, that is all, comes, the city pays for that water. It comes off of a spicket over at Parks, goes into a tank, and then the contractor brings that water over and waters from that component. So just so you're aware that it really is just the Roots and Branches usage. So are we, we kind of went from donations to water bills, got deeper into water bills. Are we, I'm trying to see where we, read all your faces, where we stand with water bills. Do we... Are you guys okay keeping it?
I think I'm good with it. Yeah.
It just shouldn't be broken down and popped into Roots and Branches. I mean, we're paying for it either way, so.
Okay. So if we do that, and we, we have that for the total for the water, because I have that 240 there, what I would suggest we might do is we just take that 240 line out of the Roots and Branches donations, just keep it in the water bill, so all water is just all water. I guess the question is for the other items under donations, in terms of the perennials and annuals, the garden signage, the operational expenses, that would come up to a total of about 1,500-ish. That's a little bit more than what was given to them last year. Last year was 1,471. They spent 13 something. I guess the question would be, are you okay with their ask? Okay.
Yeah, it's not much more. I'm okay with it. Everyone else good? Yep.
Just a random story. I was sitting in front of my store on Sunday, just on my phone, and a car pulled up, opened their trunk, and there was a ton of gallons of water. And I was like, what is this person doing? And they just grabbed a gallon of water, walked up to my store, and just watered the flowers outside of my store, which are my flowers and my water responsibility. And I'm like, oh, that was really nice. And then walked to the next store, Jade and Jinder, and watered her flowers. So I'm assuming it was Roots and Branches, and I'm like, oh, that's what they do. But they didn't have to water our flowers, and that was really nice. And then they put the gallon back in their trunk and drove away. So they did water other flowers. So that was really nice of them. Just a random story. Person doing, they had a ton of gallons of waters in the back of their trunk, an older lady. And I'm just like, what is this woman doing? But that was nice.
So before those three spickets were there, those who had access to the other spickets would use hoses or buckets, but a lot of people would traditionally for years or decades, bring the water in buckets in their trunk. And, but a lot of the volunteers are getting older, so it is nicer to have the spicket and have them be able to use a hose and all that. So we will, that kind of works our way all the way through. I do, without doing the numbers, I'm going to guess that by the time we add some things for the ornaments and some of these other items, and a few extra hundred dollars for Roots and Branches, that dollar amount that we had traditionally been sort of saving, or we had, there was always a small amount in the budget that would go into the undesignated funds in terms of like, putting money into a savings account for a larger project, we'll have reduced that a little bit. So I guess my last question is, as I put all these numbers together for next week, would you like me to just add those in, and you'll see where it lands? Or is there anywhere where you would like to just take a 500 or 1,000 off of someplace to kind of minimize that impact to what you would be putting traditionally into us, into the savings?
I mean, right now, we don't have anything in the future projects. Could we take it from there? That way, and then it's, it's just used, and we know we have it to spend on that, and then we could put that back in for next year. We don't have anything set for that.
So future projects, like if I go on the screen here, last year, you had about $3,000 you put into future projects?
Right.
As of the way the numbers worked out going into today's meeting, we had 279. When I put these things we just talked about, what's going to happen is, I'm going to go into the negative, probably.
Sorry, I didn't see that.
So my question is, do you want me to just, I guess, do you want me to do it and bring it to you as a negative? Or would you like me to just tweak some of the other categories where I think there's a little bit of flex, so that it comes out a little bit better at the, in the total? Yes, I could give you two, I could give you two columns, yes. That's quite easy to do. I'll just, I'll do, I'll do a 2026 and another 2026 and... Nope. Yep, I can do that. All right. Is everybody okay with that? I'll give you two columns, one with what we've talked about today with these add-ons, and then I'll give you another column that can be a point of discussion of, of how we can kind of keep things in line and try to have some fun, save funds for future projects, too. Is there anything else? Any concerns? Thoughts?
Nope.
Okay. For next week's meeting, we did send out notices to everyone that the meeting was happening. It is a hearing. I don't know how many people might show up. I had one business owner who reached out. I provided the information and some links and some things like that, but didn't hear back, so. And I think I sent that email last Friday morning, so. Otherwise, I don't think, did we have any other, any, Ashley, did anybody else reach out yesterday afternoon? No, okay.
Okay. All right. Otherwise, just the agenda items for next meeting. Is there anything else that anybody wanted to have for discussion? If not, we'll have a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
All right, all those in favor? Thank you for coming today, everyone. Appreciate your time.
Thanks, everybody. I thought this would be a long one. You guys were...